Good evening and welcome to our Smyrna Town Council Workshop to set our agenda for our July meeting tonight. Before we move into our items for discussion, I'm going to ask Mark Atkins to do our prayer and Tim if you'll do our pledge. You'll stand with us, please.
Father, thank you again for just another beautiful day here in Smyrna. Lord, we ask that you give deliverance to us tonight as we process the business of the town. Help us make wise decisions that benefit our citizens. But we also pray for our country right now, while lots going on in our country and a lot of COVID experience still taking place, Father. We just, we ask that you heal those that have been sickened by that, continue to watch and guide over everything that we do. Continue also, Lord, to watch over our police and fire departments, all of our employees as they do their work in the town. Keep them safe, Father, and let them know they're appreciated. We ask all these things in your name. Amen.
Join me in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mark and Tim. Before we move into items for discussion, Brian, I know you have an announcement you want to make.
Two things real quick. You'll notice we're petitioned off in all of our proceedings tonight. I want to give a shout out to the Building and Grounds Group for, I got with them yesterday morning and said, hey, the governor's released some information saying we're going to still be in six-foot separation or some separation as far as the COVID, but as of July 1st, we're going back to regular in-house meetings. It's going to be appropriate for us to be able to do so. So came up with what I think is a pretty novel idea and way for us to separate and still be able to conduct our business. So Building and Grounds, I just appreciate so much their work in making this look good for us. The other thing I just want to point out is we have a guest with us today, Kathleen Caldwell, who's a student from Cumberland University and going to MTSU. Kathleen reached out to us, gosh, what, about a month ago and wanted to know, she's looking at municipal government as a part of her studies, want to know a little bit more about, and she's from here and asked if she could come in to do some volunteer work. So we sat down with her and really talked about what her mission was, and Todd and Holland are working with her to do some shadowing over the next few weeks. She'll be around shadowing some of our offices and seeing some of our processes, but she wanted to come to the council workshop tonight. So I just want to recognize Kathleen and welcome her. And you may see her around a little bit, so.
Great. I think you and I emailed a little bit back and forth, so I'm glad that we were able to find a spot. So, okay, anything else, Brian?
No, ma'am, that's all.
Okay. We will move into our items for discussion tonight. Our first item is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a development agreement with Suncrest Real Estate and Land relative to a road impact fee offset for the Cedar Hills development.
That's actually been pulled later.
Okay.
That's been pulled later.
Okay, we will move on to item two, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a renewal contract with Dreamscape relative to the mowing for the building safety department.
Mayor and council, this is the renewal contract for the mowing company that works with our coach to mow the overgrown yards.
Questions for Todd on this? Okay, we will put that on the agenda and move on to item three, which is approval of the-
Mayor, we have one addition to that we wanted to mention real quick if we could.
Sure.
We've been working with the police department and trying to secure the license plate reader cameras, and we're at the final stages of it right now. We've been demoing it. Very interesting piece of software. What it does is it gives us alerts when we have, just the other day, we had one alert which somebody was wanted out of a different state. There's no extradition. And so we've been working with the police department, demoing the product. The product has worked very, very well, and so we're trying to work through the contract issues and some of those issues and hopefully bring it to the next council meeting with that contract. But it's a very good program that we wanted to mention while I have my two minutes up here.
Great. I was excited to see that we were demoing that, and I think it'll be something that will hopefully be beneficial here in the town. Jerry, I know you had seen it as well. Okay, item three is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute the TDOT Right of Ways Maintenance Contract.
Mayor and council, this agreement allows the town of Smyrna to receive reimbursement for maintenance work that the town does on state routes within the town city limits. This agreement does have a maximum of $212,486.64, and we mainly use this for mowing, litter removal, pavement markings, and road surface maintenance.
Questions for Charles on this? Okay, then we'll move on to item four, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract addendum with Mint Condition relative to the janitorial services at the Justice Center. Don't everybody jump up at once.
I guess I'll take this one. Chief and I visited a couple of weeks ago. You know, we have a janitor that works at the Judicial Center, but what we're finding is it's just not enough, you know, hours in the day for her to get what we need. So what we're asking for is to be able to use Mint, who is the company that we're using here at this building and also at the town center, just for the common areas to just kind of help us stay ahead of some of the issues down there. So it's kind of a partial contract to do some cleaning at the Judicial Building in the Commons area. And we've got the budget money appropriated to do so.
Question for Brian on this?
So you said it's also going to be at the Smyrna Event Center as well?
They're already doing the Event Center.
Okay.
Yeah, they're already doing this building and the Event Center, and what we want to do is expand that contract to do the Commons areas at the Judicial Building.
Okay, but the lady will continue to do the rest of it?
She'll still do the offices and stuff because we don't really want them in the, you know, some of the, like, the captain's offices and stuff because of some things. So we'll use our in-house person to do that, but they can help us with the upkeep of the Commons.
Okay. We'll move on to item five, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Consolidated Utility District relative to the Cedarstone Park sign location. Mike?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Mayor and Council. The entrance sign out at Cedarstone Park had to be placed a little bit over the water line out there. At the time, I don't think the contractor realized it. They did one call, but found the front line near the road was abandoned. So about a two-foot square of this sign is over the water line out there, and we worked with Consolidated just to work on an agreement. I think this is pretty common for them to do that, and they've been nice enough to do it. After the fact, as you well know, with any of these, if they have to go in there and repair a line, it would be on us to repair it as far as the sign, but he didn't anticipate that to happen. It's not a whole lot of valves and things like that in that area, but we just asked for approval with this agreement with CUD.
Questions for Mike on this? Okay, we'll put that on the agenda and move on to item six, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute Change Order Number Two with Greenway of Nashville relative to the Zama Park project. Mike?
Yes, ma'am. We've been working with Greenways of Nashville on Zama Park. Can I see that Kevin's here. He was the designer on that job. Couple of different things. Early on, we had asked to have some designs to kind of show some of the parallels with Zama City, and Kevin and his staff came up with some of the gates of agriculture, hospitality, and industry. And after meet with Brian and Rex, we would like to move forward. We're doing two out of the three there of the gates and also add to the change order of replacing the sidewalk. We were, in the plans, we were leaving an existing sidewalk along Lowry, and we tried every way in the world to leave it, but an old sidewalk next to new concrete has not looked the best, and it's cracked in several places, and some of it is over the 2% cross slope. So we feel like it's an opportunity to go ahead and replace that and make sure it follows the ADA guidelines while we're in there. And I think it will make the park look better and also bring us into compliance there. As far as the gates, we worked several months with different people trying to get pricing on those gates and had no luck that was anywhere near a budget we wanted to spend. So Greenways of Nashville looked at that and came up with a price that you see in front of you, and we feel like that's a fair price compared to what we've seen.
Questions for Mike on this?
So this amount is in our budget, which y'all have agreed?
Yes, ma'am. We talked about budget, how we recover that.
Okay.
When you think about gates, my first thought is like a passage gate. These are actually kind of an arch that goes over the sidewalk completely that you'd walk through. So it's kind of an archway, and what we're going to do, we had three, but we're going to move them one to one, one on each end. So it's kind of like an entrance on each end going into the park. And we still could come back later. We've got some ideas how we can do the third one at a later date, but just to make sure we stayed within budget, we wanted to limit those two.
Questions for Mike or Brian on this? Okay, we'll move on to item seven, which is consideration and approval of the classification and compensation plan for the fiscal year 2020-2021. How are you, Jeff?
Doing fine. Mayor and council, I apologize. Normally, we bring this to you in June when you're reviewing the budget, and I neglected to do that. At the last minute, Brian and I talked that we didn't want to squeeze it on under other, so we brought it to you now. The numbers that are in the class and the compensation plan are reflected in the budget that you did approve, but you guys do normally approve this separately, and so I wanted to make sure and bring it to you tonight for your consideration.
Questions for Jeff on this? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item eight is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract amendment with Itron Incorporated relative to the meter reading system. Mr. Parker, how are you?
Pretty good. Evening, Mayor and Council. Filling in for Mike. He's currently attending a high school graduation for one of the sons. So this is an amendment to an existing contract we have with Itron with our gas AMI project. We will be updating the warranty information going from 10 years full and 10 years pro-rated to 15 years full to five years pro-rated.
Questions for Mark on this? Okay, we'll move on to item nine, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Reagan Smith relative to the Construction Engineering Inspection and Construction Administration for the Lowry Street Phase One Streetscape Improvements Project. That is a mouthful.
It is. It's a long title.
That is.
But Mayor and council, TDOT has issued the construction notice per se, and this allows the town of Smyrna to put the project out to bid. This agreement will allow Reagan Smith to do the construction, engineering, and inspection services, and it sets their fee schedule for this.
Questions for Charles on this? Okay, glad to see that project finally moving on.
Yes, we are too.
What is the timeline on that again?
We'll hopefully get it bid into July. We're looking at, well, a three-month construction period. We've already started working with the utilities to get their movement on the utilities out of the area, so hopefully that helps speed the project up.
Okay, we'll move on to item 10, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with SEC Incorporated relative to the professional services for the Spring Hill Drive Extension Project.
Mayor and council, while Spring Hill Drive starts at Rock Springs Road at the Hunter's Point subdivision, this project will start at the termination point where Spring Hill dead ends now, and it will connect into Wildwood Drive and Spring Hill Drive, which is behind the Rocky Fork Elementary School. And utilities will also be following this line with gas, water, and sewer.
Questions on this?
Mayor, if I could, I want to point out, this is one of the road projects that you're going to learn about at our upcoming roads meeting. But there, right now, with the two schools that are back there and the subdivisions, the only inlet and outlet is Big Sun Road. So this will give us a secondary interest in case there's ever an issue, not only for general public use as far as traffic, but also for our emergency services.
I think parents will be very happy with that.
It should have been done.
And speaking of the roads thing, can you send out a, just when you said that-
Right. We're going to talk about it.
Okay, but will you also send out an invitation for calendar?
Yes, ma'am, we will.
Thank you.
How much road is this, Charles?
It's about seven tenths of a mile.
Like a huge connection.
Yeah, it's, it'll be a great connector right in there. And like I said, where Rocky Fork Road means schools are, those are already named Spring Hill Drive, so it's just the connection between them.
There have to be, well, there have to be property purchases at the end of Spring Hill Drive right there, it looks like.
Yeah, it looks like it may be one or two, depending on the alignment. It's kind of a property line right through the ridge there, so it depends on how the design goes, whether we'll have to have one or two right-of-way takes on the project.
And this will just be really beginning that process of the planning. This is not actually building the road right now.
Yeah, this is just for survey, design, and right-of-way paperwork on that to get it ready for construction.
Other questions? Move on to item 11, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute Change Order Number Two with Jones Brother Contractors LLC relative to the Enon Springs Road West Extension Project.
Mayor and council, this is just a couple of housekeeping items. There was a utility item, the Dozier work that we did out on the firing range, adding that into the contract, some conduit, and the additional asphalt that was to build up for when we had to do our phasing to have extra asphalt on the shoulder so that would not give way while we were in the first phase, running traffic on it. And the main thing, it sets the completion date for the project at July 31st, 2020.
Questions on this?
That's completion from Old Nashville Highway.
Yeah, substantial completion from Old Nashville Highway.
We've got a lot of work to do in 30 days.
They've got rock base all the way up to Old Nashville. We're there right now. We had to close one lane on Old Nashville to make the utility connections and get the intersection in there. So they've got it rocked up there and ready to start putting base asphalt. I believe next week they'll be bringing it on closer down to Old Nashville.
Good.
And just with the council's information, one of the important pieces here is saying that they have a deadline date now, because if they go past that, then there'll be some damages that they will be reimbursing us for, so.
Are the curbs in?
Partially.
Partially. Most of it's in. They've pulled on down. They're almost down to about St. Francis intersection right now. We ran into an issue there, but-
They have sidewalks too, correct?
No, this will not have sidewalks on it. No, this is just going to be the two-lane with the eight-foot paved shoulders on it for now.
We've got additional right-of-way there though, too, don't we?
Yeah, when we complete the road-
Sidewalk would come probably when we-
We go to the full five-lane, there'll be room for sidewalks.
Other questions? Okay, we will move on to item 12, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a professional services agreement with Randy Button and Associates relative to appraisal services for the Sam Ridley and Weekly Lane Utilities Project.
Mayor, I guess I'll take that.
I guess that's you?
Obviously, just as you stated, Mayor, we utilize Randy Button and Associates for our appraisals during the Olive Branch, so we've been satisfied with them, and obviously they'll be employed for the Sam Ridley and Weekly Lane Utilities.
Questions for Jeff on this? Okay, we'll move on to item 13, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a letter of agreement with Brenda Walsh relative to the professional consulting and acquisition services for the Sam Ridley and Weekly Lane Waterline Project. Jeff?
Likewise, to piggyback on the previous item, Ms. Walsh has been our acquisition agent on numerous projects for the town over the last 10 years, and we're just asking that she continues as far as this small project compared to the rest of the projects we're working on.
Any questions for Jeff? Okay, we'll move on to item 14, which is consideration of a resolution approving funding for the nonprofit organizations for fiscal year 2020 through 2021. It's our yearly item on the agenda.
Here we go again.
That's right.
A resolution stating the agency, the purpose, and amount must be approved before any funds can be dispersed to nonprofit agencies according to guidelines established by the Comptroller of the State of Tennessee, and we wish that you would approve that resolution.
Questions for Rex on this? Item 15 is consideration of the declaration of surplus items. Rex?
Here we go again. Attached to the list of surplus items that need to be sold at auction, the list includes equipment and furniture. There's some vehicles and tractors that has been removed from service or no longer utilized. Town seeks permission to conduct an online auction to sell these surplus items. The auction will be advertised in the Murfreesboro Post on the website and Channel 3. All the surplus items will be sold through GovDeals, an online auction company.
Any questions for Rex? Anything y'all see you can't live without?
I'm just trying to figure out how we have any equipment that's high-gloss ox for shoe size. Eight and a half, and is it just one shoe?
They were running when we got that.
Any questions? Okay, we will put all of those items on the agenda. Anything under other tonight?
Mayor, I have an item. Due to the CARES Act funding and the Public Works and Economic Adjustment Assistance Program, in order to apply for those funds, the state is requiring each municipality that would like to seek those funds to pass the resolution. The grant award can be of $1,801,996, and we have to have a match of $450,000. This is in conjunction with the Rutherford County Airport for improvements with roads and utilities and those types of infrastructures. I apologize that you don't have it in front of you, but I would like if the council could vote in the positive for us to pass this resolution to go forward just to apply for the grant.
Let me point out, too, we're co-authoring this grant with the airport, and GNRC is running the grant process for them. They sent this to us yesterday, wanting us to have it back to them by Friday to submit. The earlier they can get the CARES grant in, the better off the likelihood of getting the money. So it kind of came to us at the last minute, so that's a reason there's such a sense of urgency here.
Questions for Jeff on this? Do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Brian, other?
One other thing under other. As you guys may be aware of, we've had some conversation individually, and I know we've talked collectively a little bit. We, during the COVID pandemic and the stay-at-home part of the pandemic, we relaxed our food truck policy to allow food trucks to go into some of the neighborhoods, to give people an opportunity to still be able to get some food from outside the kitchen and those kind of things. With the governor releasing the restaurants back to 100% capacity, we felt it was time for us to move forward with going back to our ordinance and employing the ordinance. We made that at BZA this past week. We read that statement, and then we added it to our Facebook page. And needless to say, there's been several comments on Facebook, and I know each of you have received several phone calls. Just want to put it out there that this is a topic that we're going to need to take a look at. Of course, it is the pleasure of the council how we reconcile this issue, but we do have a current policy in place, and all we were trying to do is go back to the original ordinance, so.
Well, and Brian, the ordinance was done prior to you getting here, and initially just so, you know, when we originally did it, food trucks weren't going into residential areas. They were mainly in commercial areas, and so we addressed the commercial portion of it, you know, looking at bricks and mortar buildings and making sure we were thinking about those businesses as well. So we really weren't even thinking about residential at that time. So what I'd like to see us do is let's look around and see what other communities are doing and-
We've already begun that process.
Right.
We've done some of that, and I'm not at a point where I'd like to share that. I think there's some more that we'd like to make sure we're being, looking at everything. One of the issues that I think we're going to deal with, the governor during his dining out program during the COVID allowed for the sale of alcohol and beer and wine, and we actually had some of the food trucks that were supplying beer and wine into the neighborhoods. That's a caveat of this, that, you know, the governor may pull back that piece of this, and that's going to affect also what we're going to allow the food trucks to do if we do, you know, change our policy to allow, you know, inside residential areas and that kind of stuff. So just, I want to make sure we have all the issues on the table as we look at this.
Would you be prepared by the next workshop to maybe bring us back what other communities are doing and that sort of thing?
Yes, ma'am.
That'd give you 30 days. In the meantime, could we continue to allow them to go into, are you comfortable with that, to continue to allow them to go into the neighborhoods until we make a decision?
If that's the pleasure of this council, I'm happy to do so.
That's exactly what I was fixing to ask. If it looks like we're going to make a change, or we're at least going to review it, then let's leave it as it has been for the pandemic until we make that decision.
Yeah.
Be happy to do so.
Well, and the feedback that I've been getting is that even though restaurants are back at capacity, there are still a lot of folks that are uncomfortable with it, folks that have, you know, underlying health issues that even with, you know, lifting, it's served a good purpose, and I'd like to make sure that we-
Sure.
-fully vet this.
But I think, you know, we have to be, recognize there's two sides to this issue, and I have had actually a few restaurants that are brick and mortar that are very supportive of us because of, they have the capacity through Grubhub and Uber Eats and those kind of things to bring meals to the community out of their stores. So there's, again, I'm really, I'm just wanting to make sure you have all the information. So as we've had people that are continuing to ask for the ability to have the food trucks in their neighborhood, we do have some bricks and mortars that are going, this is, you know, getting into my business now because we do have the capacity to serve those meals.
That's the beauty of free market and competition, right?
Well, but I think we also, when we bring it back in 30 days that we have to think about is, you know, if their business is not here in the town of Smyrna, if they're a food truck out of somewhere else, those dollars go back to whatever community that they're in.
Are they required to have a business license within the town of Smyrna if they come and sell inside Smyrna?
No.
Should they be?
No, state laws dictates, especially if they're not over $50,000 in sales. They only register with their home county, so they would not be required.
So other than a service being provided to our citizens of being the ease of going to the food truck, that's it?
Correct.
So I just think we need to think about all those things. I'm not saying one way or the other. I think we need to get all the information, but I think those things need to be taken into consideration.
I think one thing that people really like about it, and completely understand, is that what we've gone through over the past few months, and everybody staying at home, and then here's the truck out in the neighborhood, and the neighbors are able to get out and commune with each other and talk to other people besides the same ones that they have been quarantined with. So I completely understand that it's a, it's like a perk, I guess, for the citizenry. But there still reaches a point where it's the fairness to the Smyrna businesses, the ones who have invested their time and their money in building a brick and mortar business within our town. And from there, I just think we need to tread carefully as we go forward. I think looking at what other people are doing is very important, and I just think we need to go careful forward with this.
Well, not-
Because we're looking at something that we're probably going to live with. Once the cat's out of the bag, and, you know, we've already let the cat out of the bag once, and so, you know, when the opportunity comes, how do you put it into a situation where it's fair?
Well, and hopefully, over the next 30 days, we all can individually talk to citizens in the town that, one way or another, how they feel, but I think they need to hear all of the information that, you know, the town of Smyrna reaps no benefit from those food trucks that are outside of the city limits of Smyrna other than the service they're providing of supplying the food.
I guess my point is, it's just we have some small businesses that are struggling within our town now, and we don't want to put any additional burden on them.
And I think, it's like HG said, the feedback I got has been, it's allowed them to meet people in their communities that they've not met, they said they wouldn't meet. And it- meet, and it, that was kind of the, what I have heard of. And then people that would not, like Tim said, the ones that said, I can't and I don't feel comfortable going to a restaurant. So that's kind of the feedback that I've been getting.
And obviously, we'll have more dialogue on this, but what is, do we know what Murfreesboro's doing currently, and?
I do, but I'm putting together a list of-
And the only reason I'm asking that is because, you know, if we have food trucks coming in here that go back home, would we have food trucks that could go to Murfreesboro and come back home? You know, the neighboring communities, could they-
There's a lot out of Nashville.
Well, I think they are, but I just, that's another, that's just another part of the puzzle.
Yeah, I think it's all stuff that we need to, yeah, discuss, but how do you all feel between now and the next 30 days that we continue to allow it the way that it has been since the pandemic started until we make a decision?
I think that's fair.
Yes.
Okay, anything else under other?
Oh, ma'am.
Ms. Diane, anything?
No, other than-
Ms. Diane, anything?
Sorry. We're still issuing business licenses before getting very creative in their businesses. We've had 31, still busy.
Great. Our directors, are they good to give their reports?
Some have some reports, so yes.
Todd, anything from you?
Now they're going to make a liar out of it.
No. Rex, anything?
I want to do the, the revenue reports that we do. These are May local sales tax, which is from April transactions, which was the first month that we had our shutdown. So in the local sales tax, we received $1,78,328, giving us a year-to-date surplus of $214,609, and that is down 3% from the May 29 report, which I thought was pretty strong considering that was a full month of lockdown. The May state share tax, we received $424,444. That gives us a year-to-date surplus of $57,604, and is down 18% from May of 2019 report. The revenue that was impacted the most was in the state street aid, and those revenues were down 30%. And if you remember from the budget retreat, the two biggest items in state street aid is street lighting and street paving, so.
When we got these out, to be honest, I was really shocked, so.
I was pleasantly shocked.
Pleasantly shocked, yes, I would agree. So I thought it was going to be significantly worse, so. But you heard what the governor said the other day, that Tennessee's number one in bouncing back is what they're showing as of right now. Obviously, we've gotten opened up faster than a lot of states and communities have, so hopefully people will continue to. Did what HG?
Shocked.
There we go. Okay, anything else, Rex?
Uh, yes, ma'am. The only other revenue that we're a little bit concerned about would be business taxes, and that's not definitive just yet.
Right. Okay.
The state street aid is probably down because if we're going to drive, correct, this is gas taxes.
Right. Okay, um, who's next? Kevin, anything?
Just real quickly tonight, didn't have anything on, anything on the agenda, which is very rare, and we, that was a one-time blip. We're going to have quite a bit coming next month, planning commission next week, and several plats, and we're continuing to talk to a lot of people that are looking at doing developments in, in town. It's, I thought things would really start to slow because of the economy, and it just, it's not really happening, so, at least not in our world.
And I'm hearing that from other mayors across middle Tennessee, so it's kind of same thing.
Well, while Kevin's up here, just to comment, you know, in my line of work, oftentimes I have to ask people to either go see Kevin or call Kevin, or Mark Parker, and Mike, and some of those guys back in that department, and they always just give high praises to you guys, say you're just really great to work with, they thank, they're thankful that we have the staff that we do here, that can take the time to meet with them and, you know, give them the answers they're looking for. So I really appreciate you guys for doing that.
Okay, thanks, Kevin. John, anything? No, all good. Mike?
Just got one thing, Mayor. We're kind of diving into the tourism grant, the cycle has come around again, and as y'all well know, we did the last one, the 2018 cycle, and did the, built the depot canopy, so this year is a 75,000 maximum grant, and that'd be a 50% on each end, town of Smyrna and the state. So we're looking at projects that might benefit the town and tourism, bring in tourism dollars, so I've kind of got a, a list going, and I'll get with Brian and Rex to kind of call that out and come up with what we want to do. I think the, everything's due the middle of July, so if we want to go forward, we should be able to do that. Reason I'm bringing that up is we may need to bring, bring that up at the next council meeting, just to show that the town would match the funds.
And did you say it went from 200, didn't go from 250 to half a million?
Well, not this one, this is the tourism grant.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the LPR grant is half a million, it used to be 250.
Okay, any questions for Mike on that? Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Jimmy, you have anything?
No, ma'am.
Glad to see you here. Charles, anything?
Mayor, I see the only other thing would be the Sam Ridley Parkway widening, that's going full force right now. We have the utility contractor on the east side, the road contractors on the west side putting in storm drain. We did have Wolverine Drive closed Tuesday and Wednesday, and appreciate the traveling public's patience, and just try to be safe through the construction area as that construction continues.
Great. Any questions? Thank you, sir. Jeff, Greg? No? Chief? Nothing? Great. Well, Hollins back there, how have things been? Good?
I'm still here.
Oh, good, good. We're, we're glad that, that you are, so. Okay, Ms. Diane, I checked with you. Brian, anything?
Mr. Mayor and Council, I have a couple of things that I wanted to make you guys aware of. I know that in the public sector, we've, you as council members, and of course, as administration, especially Parks and Recs, we've been getting a lot of questions about opening our parks, playgrounds, the swimming pool, basketball, those kind of things, so I just want to go, kind of give a quick update. There's a, let's see if we can get the video up. We are happy to announce that as of Saturday, the 27th, at 8:00 AM, we will be opening the playgrounds at the parks. These signs will be recognized at those, and it says, "Parents and guardians are responsible for bringing their own disinfectant, wiping down, or sanitizing equipment before and after use and maintaining a social distance of six feet." This is in alignment with what we're seeing some other communities doing, as I've told you more than once, my hesitance to open the playgrounds has been, there's so many touch points, and there's just no way to, you know, completely keep the area clean, so it's basically, you know, putting it in the hands of the, the families that want to use those facilities to take care of their own health and safety during that time. So we will have the parks, playgrounds open starting this Saturday at 8:00 AM, so that, that will be moving forward. Basketball and contact sports have still not been released by the governor. I checked on that again today, just to make sure that we hadn't missed a, an order that maybe got through the cracks, we didn't see it, but there's so many of them that have come through. We do speculate that July 1st, the current order 38 expires on the end of the month, and there will be a new order out on July 1st. We anticipate that maybe some of the contact sports will be released during that time with certain protocols. Once we receive that order, we'll, you know, take a look at, at all the protocols and see what we can do to implement those, those items, based on our comfort of being able to provide those services. As far as the swimming pool and the splash pads, I've been meeting with Parks and Rec, and, and we are working on our protocols right now to hopefully open the pools and the splash pad, but it'll be later in July before we'll be prepared to make that announcement. We're continuing to monitor some of the issues that are going on with COVID. If you're looking at the numbers based on the state, we're seeing numbers, again, incline and those kind of things, so we're working on those protocols. Hopefully, we'll have something in the next week and a half or so to announce on where we're at with the pools and the splash pad. Also, we talked a few minutes ago, Mayor, you had asked to make sure we get a calendar event. We are looking at July the 30th to have a, prior to the council workshop, a one-hour meeting to update the roads and those kind of things with the council. It's been a little while since we've done that. One of the things I've asked Charles and Tom to do for us is come, also prepare, you know, you guys know what roads we're working on and kind of where they're at, we just want to give you a highlight of that. Also, want to share with you our three- and five-year plan of continued road growth, and also the paving, repaving of streets over the next couple of years, what's on our list. That way, if you know some things that are out there, you see some issues that you'd like for us to put in, in that list for consideration, that we can make those adjustments. So we'll, we'll be doing that in kind of a two-part sequence on the July 30th, and I'll get an announcement or an invitation on your calendar. Also, I think last meeting, we talked about, you know, with the Chamber of Commerce, we've really enjoyed the opportunity to have Joy, and Ms. Tilly out here as part of our family working at the chamber desk in our lobby, they both have, have taken retirement. We, I think it was last Monday was Joy's last day, and she came by the office, and we recognized her a little bit with some of the, the employees. Working with Paula Tour and Kelly Beam at the chamber, we'd like to do a little more formal thank you for those ladies and the years of service they've provided, working as ambassadors for the town of Smyrna through the chamber. So on the 14th of July, which is our next council meeting, probably prior to the council meeting, we'll have a little reception out here in the lobby, and then we'll recognize them at the first of our council meeting, if that's, that's okay with everybody, that's kind of the plan, so. I'll get something out to you in your calendar to let you know about those two events, but did want to make you aware of those. That's all I've got, Mayor.
Okay. Any questions for Brian? Jeff?
Just want to thank Kevin Rigsby. We were able to finish up some development agreements regarding wind farms this past week, so I appreciate Kevin's help with that, as well as Tom Rose. There's quite a few agreements dealing with some of the improvements that we're making out there, and I, I just appreciate their, being on top of those things. Olive Branch, we've met with several more folks that were kind of having difficulties with the agreements on, on the property acquisition, and we've settled several more this week. I believe we only have about two or three outstanding, as far as folks that just don't agree, but we're moving forward with that as best that we can.
Any questions for Jeff? Thanks.
Mayor, can I share one other thing in the vein of, of some of our developments? Wanted to let you know, I received an email last night from Project Alta Depot, and I just happened to see it on Jeff's computer, to let you know where we're at on that. They have a tentative date of closing on the property, the 1st of July, around, around the 6th, with, they expect construction to be about 30 days behind that, so that project is still moving forward. Got real good information as far as their partners and, and continuing to move forward with this project. They had some questions about the influence of COVID in our community with Nissan, and where they were at as far as getting back to work and those kind of things, which, as you would imagine, is going to influence their, their rental opportunities. And one of the things I thought was interesting, they were very interested in where we were at on the linear park, which is Zama Park, so I was happy to send them pictures and say, not only are we building this park, but probably by the time you close and start construction, we'll be ribbon cutting on that park, so that was a, a big influence on what they were doing as well, so just wanted, as council and the community, let you know that project is moving forward.
Great. I'm also glad to know Jeff was not playing games over there on the computer or anything, that he was actually-
Was right next to his Pac-Man game.
Oh, got it.
He's got a split screen.
So he's halfway working, is what you're saying?
I'm flying my drone.
Okay. Raquel?
Brian, I had a question for you about the parks, just for clarification. So parents, if they're concerned, they're going to need to bring their own wipes and sanitizer-
Yes, ma'am.
And be able to wipe down for themselves, right? Okay, I just want to make sure that was clear.
Yeah, and that's been our concern, is just, if you think about children on a playset, I mean, I don't, as you wipe down, it'd be, you know, children are just going to be following you, it's just continuous movement and continuous touching, and, and we just, you know, even if we blew a whistle and moved everybody off the park, spent 15 minutes cleaning, within two minutes, you're going to be touching where somebody else just touched. So our, our theory is, is we've said many times with COVID, you as an individual have to be comfortable, and you, you're responsible for your own safety. If you're not comfortable bringing your children to that PlayStation in, in the park, we understand that, but for those that want to utilize the park system, we want to make sure we're opening it, but there are better work, I guess for lack of better words, there's going to be some caveats, that you're going to have some responsibility in that.
Okay. Just want to make sure that was clear.
Yes, ma'am.
And also, I had two things, since we, we won't be meeting before the 4th of July, I wanted to wish everyone a safe Independence Day. I don't know if, Mayor, you're going to talk about that at all, since we're not doing the fireworks, okay? Okay, so I just wanted to say, have a safe and happy 4th of July, everyone. And lastly, I would like to extend condolences for the city of Brentwood on the loss of their officer. I think that was the first one they've had in the line of duty at all, Officer Destin Leguiza, whose funeral was yesterday, so I, I wanted to take a moment to just extend my condolences to our neighboring city of Brentwood, and that's all I have. Thanks.
HG?
Basically, just wish everybody a very happy and safe 4th. That's it.
Tim?
Big family week for me. I had a grandson, Jordan Warwick, that graduated from Blackman High School, and it was the first graduation that I watched from the comfort of my recliner on YouTube. And I got to be honest, I kind of liked it. Temperature?
Hurt your arm?
No comment. Secondly, Donna and I celebrated our 29th wedding anniversary on Monday, and as far as being lucky and marrying up, I hit the jackpot there. And my sister, Teresa, who I've been close with forever, had her birthday this past Tuesday, so happy birthday again to my sister. And for everyone, you know, I wish safe and happy, and 4th of July, it's a great time with family and friends, and looking forward to all the celebrations that are going to take place around town. Thanks.
Great. Jerry?
I've got several. I guess start off first, had a great time last week at the Cedar Stone Grand Open, and you guys did a fantastic job. That is a beautiful facility out there. I heard nothing but just comments from, from everyone, and there was actually a professional baseball player out there last week, I don't know if you know that or not, that a local professional baseball player was out there, Sonny, and was talking about it, so really nice and really enjoyed it. And congratulations to those that the park were named after, HG, Jenny Coon, and then, of course, the late Mr. Carlson, but congratulations to those. Happy anniversary to my son Tyler and his wife Shelby today, and so they're out celebrating some today, and they're one-year-old, well, will be one-year-old, his birthday's coming up, Davis, so happy birthday to, to my grandson next week. The, also just want to say happy 4th as well to, to everyone, and sure ain't to miss the fireworks this year, but we'll, we'll get them next year, I'm sure.
Great. Steve?
Happy 4th of July. Hope that you get an opportunity to celebrate, I guess, with your immediate family and the folks that you're close with. I would like to extend some condolences. My wife's uncle, Louis Shelton, passed away a couple days, a week or so ago. He was 90, so good, long life. It's my father-in-law's younger brother. My father-in-law is celebrating his 92nd birthday on the same day that we buried his brother, so a little bit of a tough week, but a happy birthday to my father-in-law, 92 years old, and condolences for the loss of his brother. Also, my son celebrated his 21st birthday, June 17th, so happy birthday to him. He probably is watching online. It's kind of odd to say that I no longer have children. It's kind of odd to say that I no longer have children, I am now a parent of two adults, which is kind of strange. So that's about it, that's all I got.
Great. Mark?
So happy belated Father's Day to all the fathers, because the last time we met, that had not yet occurred yet, so hope everybody got to enjoy their fathers, whether they're here with us now or passed, but a lot of good dads that I know, mine especially, so I want to wish every father belated happy Father's Day. Happy Independence Day, of course, coming up. Tim and Donna, happy anniversary to you guys, and you may be watching the things that you want to watch now on YouTube, I guess, right? So you're going to, you watch Independence Day on YouTube from now on?
Yes, I will. Christmas, right?
Yeah, Christmas everything, right?
Yeah.
HG and the rest of the honorees, congratulations to all you guys for being well-respected in the naming of the fields out there at Cedar Stone. Obviously, I was not in town, or I would have loved to have tended, so just wanted to pass on the best wishes to all those that were honored in that way, and appreciate their work for our community in the years past to receive that honor. It is a beautiful park. It is gorgeous out there. Joy Gallion, of course, just want to mention her again. Happy retirement, Joy, and Harold, I hope you guys enjoy some years and some free time. And the young lady in the back, Kathleen, welcome. Want to remind you, there's a lot to this, so pay attention, and see if you like it after a couple meetings. And lastly, just want to say thank you to our Smyrna Police and Fire Departments once again. I mean, those guys are out there doing the work in an environment right now where it's tough. You know, I just want to tell them, offer them encouragement, let them know we're thinking about them and their safety. That's all I have, Mayor.
Great. So I have a few housekeeping items, I think, are they being put up on the screen?
They should be.
I did not. So congratulations to the class of 2020 Smyrna High School in Stewart's Creek. Commencement ceremonies are Friday, I think Stewart's Creek is on Saturday, I think, but maybe not, maybe that's right. My niece is actually graduating from Stewart's Creek. I'm not even sure which day it is, because I'll be watching it from my living room as well, so.
Play it on YouTube.
There you go, there you go. But huge accomplishment in the graduation, and I know that they are trying to work around getting, ceremony might not be the same as it always has been, but it is still a huge accomplishment, and we're very proud of those individuals. Next, Smyrna Depot Farmers Market, it successfully opened May the 23rd, and will be open each Saturday from 8:00 until noon through September 29th. Remember, there were some modifications that have been made, but from what I've heard, it's been a huge success, and lots of great product that is being offered on Front Street. Next, we have the ribbon cutting. If you did not get an opportunity to come out to the ribbon cutting, you missed a great time, but the thing that's really exciting was, our first tournament was held this past weekend, and let me just tell you, this park is second to none across the country, and if you get an opportunity, go out and check it out, and starting on Saturday, the playground will be open, so you'll be able to use all parts of the park. Is that it? Looks like that's it. I also want to offer condolences to Brentwood. Actually, once Britt and I heard that, Britt is in law enforcement, my husband as well, and Britt was in a class with that young man's father, who is also a police officer. And John, were you in that class? Not in that class. So, you know, it is a tight-knit group of individuals, and our condolences go out to the family, as well as to Brentwood. Anything else tonight from anybody? Okay, if nothing else, then we are adjourned.